Good evening. I'd like to call to order the September 25th Committee of the Whole Meeting for 6:30. It is 6:35 and all members are present except Counselor Parker and she is on her way. She was attending the TVCCA meeting on our behalf up in Norwich, so she should be arriving very soon. Calendar Communications, Counselor Baumgartner.
So, I attended the Plan of Conservation and Development Public Hearing in the City of Groton last week. Last week, the city also heard plans about...
Do I have to speak into the microphone?
Yes, can you hear me?
No.
Hello?
Hello.
The city right now is also undergoing a change with their plan of conservation and development, so I attended that meeting as well as heard about electric boats, plans for the South Yard, which is very exciting, represents a great opportunity for Groton in terms of employment as well as economic growth, so very glad to be a part of that. And had the privilege of attending Ms. G's civics class where Ms. G being our esteemed mayor, in her dual role as teacher at Grasso Tech, had the opportunity to talk to, I think, nine, ninth graders and 10th graders about civic engagement and getting involved, so it was a real privilege and tell the kids I thank them for the thank you cards.
You're welcome. I was going to mention that. I'll mention it when it's my turn. Counselor Franco.
I attended the RTM meeting, went to a Trails Committee meeting, and attended the EB expansion over at the City Municipal Building, which was quite interesting. And I received some letters from some citizens regarding the PLA.
Counselor Heath.
Oh, we did. We had a beautification meeting at the library, which was well-attended, about 40 people, and we will be having another meeting on October 1st at the Senior Center at 5:30.
On September 8th, I went to a Fairview annual celebration with Counselor Obray. It was fantastic. Food was excellent, entertainment was really great. On Monday, the 10th, I attended the Conservation Commission, and they agreed to take on the challenge of considering the reduction policies, so they broke it down very professional, very impressive. So they'll make a proposal in about six months. Following that, I then went to the Eastern, not Eastern Point, the Bluff Point Beach Cleanup, which was sponsored by the Mystic Aquarium. Picked up a lot of plastic cups and bottles and stuff, unusual. And then Tuesday, the 18th, I attended Personnel Committee with Councilors Sefiri and Schmidt.
Thank you. Counselor Obray.
I also went to the RTM meeting. It was an interesting evening. I explained to people what a paddy wagon was. Also, I attended the meeting at the celebration at Fairview, which was very, very nice, 150 years they've been up there taking care of people. And I also went to the EB presentation, or General Dynamics presentation, which was very good. It's amazing what's going to be happening down there, and I hope you all follow along with it because it's going to certainly affect Groton. If you, I don't know if you looked at all the examples they had out there. I expect they're online somewheres, but the growth in employees is really enormous, and the plan that they have for the new building and what's really going to happen there is very impressive. So, take a look at what they put out. It was very good.
Counselor Atwater.
I attended the RTM meeting. I attended the Beautification Committee, and Leanne and Rachel did a terrific job of putting that together. I attended the SCAR for the rubbish recycle, and it was quite interesting with what we're talking about on our own to learn that there's a real problem with recycling things overseas because the other, like India and China, economies are growing and they're generating their own trash, and they don't need ours anymore, so that's a problem. I attended the signed dedication for the, between the library and the Senior Center, continuing to attend the teacher contract negotiations, which hopefully will be done soon. Received a call from a person in town about the flooding on Hunting Ridge Road, which I know has been out there now with a lot of other people. And then I would like to announce that the council is having their first coffee with the councilors on October 6th, Saturday, from 10 to 12 in the morning at the library. It's a chance for people to come and just meet some councilors, ask questions, share your thoughts, and hear updates on the town.
Counselor Schmidt.
Yes, I also attended the beautification meeting, and it was gratifying that the residents attending had several excellent suggestions on what should be done and how it should be done, so I thought it was very fruitful. And I also got that phone call from Cliff Yop about problems from a small development. That was it.
Counselor Sefiri.
I attended the Personnel Committee meeting with Conrad and with Rita last week. I was concerned by the statements by one of the people who was there, that our housing authority has decided to change the purpose for which the designated housing in the properties. Housing Authority controls two properties that are essentially rental properties, and they're designed to accommodate people with low income, with disabilities, and elderly. And that was, they were built on town property with public funds. And now the executive directors decided that he should convert them and make them available for affordable housing, which would not be consistent with the original purpose. That's the report we got. I think as a council, we should look into this and invite the housing authority to committee to come and speak to us.
Okay, I met with City Mayor Keith Hedrick, and we have scheduled our next Joint Committee of the Whole meeting for October 23rd, and the town will be hosting that meeting. I met with Dr. Burrows, the Town Manager and Planning Staff, and the Trust for Public Land regarding the Burrows, the Groton family farm property, and ideas for that and potential to move forward with something that would be beneficial for everyone. I also attended the RTM meeting. I wanted to thank Counselor Parker and Counselor Baumgartner. September 17th was Constitution Day, and I invited them, and they graciously accepted, and they came in and they talked to our sophomore civic students about being engaged in your community, and the kids really enjoyed hearing from someone other than the teacher, so that was very nice, and thank you so much. And then, kind of more sober note, I attended the vigil at the Islamic Center in the City of Groton that was organized by a RTM member. And it was just a show of solidarity and a show of unity between the people in the community in response to the action that was taken against them. All right, approval of minutes, item number four. Counselor Baumgartner?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes Tuesday, September 4th, 2018.
Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Obray. Can you tell me again what date you said?
September 4th.
We need August 28th as well?
Yep. I'll also make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of August 28th, 2018. So moved.
Counselor Obray, would you like to second that, please?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any discussion on the minutes of either August 28th or September 4th? I thought I had something. There's a typo on page seven, or offer the openings, it should be openings to former zoning commission members. It's under item 5E. Just prior to the motion, there's an "N" missing. And, that's it. Oh, we all forgot to mention, we want another tour of Fitch Middle. Anyway, any other discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously, 8-0-0. We are on to new business, the superintendent update. This is page 11. No action is taken, but Dr. Grenier's here to give us an update. And Mr. Kirkpatrick, Kilpatrick, Kilpatrick. I met Mr. Kirkpatrick when I was touring Pleasant Valley, and I got very confused, yeah. I apologize for mispronouncing. Hello, Dr. Grenier, good to see you.
Well, happy to be here, thanks. I thought what we would do after speaking with John is kind of give an update on the water testing, which is ongoing. And then if the council was interested, I could give you a couple of updates, general updates on the schools. But I think, like Mr. Kilpatrick, it's Kilpatrick, right?
Yes, sir. Okay. Good evening. So, since I last saw you, this past June, we were able to arrange testing of water at both Claude Chester and Fitch High School, as those schools were, two of the schools identified with results that were not in our favor previously. And so in consultation with the State Department of Health and Ledge Light Health District, Groton Utilities did indeed conduct those tests at the beginning of June at Claude Chester and at the end of June, or nearly at the end of June at Fitch High School. And when we receive, when we received those results, at Claude Chester, there was one fountain that was found to be above the limits, and so we secured that fountain and provided, had provided bottled water to that section of the building. At Fitch High School, there were two lavatories in the 2,800s wing that were found to be above the levels, and so signs were posted in there that it's not drinking water. The sinks are still used for hand washing, but not for drink water. And in addition to the two lavatories in the building, the fieldhouse and the concession stand were also found to be above the levels. And so, in the fieldhouse, we secured the drinking water, posted signs on the sinks, and did the same in the concession stand. And so, as per request of the Department of Public Health, we did retesting of all the sites that were above the action level. And so, in August, we did the testing again at those sites that I just mentioned, at Fitch High School, and again at Claude Chester School. In addition to those, to that fountain at Claude Chester School, which happens to be in the back wing of the building, during the first round of testing in that school, we had tested two classrooms at the beginning of that wing, and the two classrooms at the end of that wing, and of course, the fountain in the center, to see if we could locate what was going on in there. And so, because the fountain was tested above the limits, when I went back to the State Health Department, it was recommended that I test the next two classrooms on either end of the wing, but that would have left only, with those two classrooms, it would have only left four classrooms in that wing untested, so I felt it prudent to move forward and test all six of those classrooms in that wing. And so, we did get the results back on those, and the, all six classrooms tested below the levels, but the fountain continued to show levels higher than acceptable. That second round of testing was also done a little bit differently. If I can just take a moment, just tell you, the first round of testing was done in, drawn in one-liter bottles. It's called the first round, and it was done in one-liter bottles. So, any tests that came back above the levels, we were instructed by the Health Department to go back and retest them by doing them in four 250-milliliter bottles. And the reasoning behind that is that it would indicate where down the line that that lead might be. It might lead us to the fountain itself, perhaps, if it was right in that first bottle, or a certain length down the line, depending on the size of the line. So, that's the reason that the testing was done a little bit differently the second time around. Then, in September, I was informed that there is a group that wanted to use a couple of lavatories for hygiene purposes at Fitch High School. And at that time, I did another test there. We did the four 250-milliliter test, just so that we could determine if they came back negative, we would have an idea where it is in the line. And at the same time, we decided to do the concession stand, the service line down to the concession stand, because the test came back at the concession stand still above the limits, whereas the fieldhouse tested below the limits, the second, in the second round. So, and doing the service line to the concession stand, which is first in line off there, hopefully I'll be able to determine whether it's coming out of the main line from the high school down to that area. And then, so, at this point, we're awaiting those results of those last tests taken at the beginning of September. Haven't got them back. We asked for expedited results, but with, I don't know how many people are asking for results right now, but I haven't got the results yet. Once I get those results, I'll be going back to Ledge Light Health District and the Department of Public Health to review the results and determine what our next steps will be. One other sidelight is that I went to the, because the concession stand was above the acceptable limits, I did go to the football game on Saturday, and we provided the concession stand with a bubbler and three large bottles of water for them to make their coffee and hot chocolate, which I think they don't make with milk anymore. They make it with water now, the hot chocolate is. So, we just wanted to make sure that they fully understood that the sink was off limits for using for drinking. We had it posted, but I just wanted to verify that and make sure that they knew that the water was there and available for their use for the coffee and the hot chocolate.
Thank you. May I ask a question before you go on? So, when I first was reading the results, you indicated that there were two at Fitch High School that came in above level. Are these the same two that were in the vintage wing, or this, is this an additional two?
Well, those sinks weren't, were not, I don't believe those sinks were tested the first, in the very first round of testing back in 2016, but the fountain outside of those were. And of course, our plumbers changed a lot of, since those original, our plumbers have actually changed a lot of the piping and fittings in that area, so that fountain that's right outside of those two lavatories tested below the limits this time. But we also tested those two sinks inside because that same group that wants to use the other lavatories now were using that, so if they're going to go back to that, I wanted to make sure that we tested it at this point.
So, I'm sorry, I'm not clear. So then, the two sinks that you tested in June, are those the same two sinks that you had told us about earlier in the year, or are these two additional sinks? Do you know what I mean?
I do know what you mean. They didn't test those sinks back in 2016. We discussed this back in the summertime.
Right, but they closed them, they closed them off.
The only thing, I believe that the only, the only thing that had tested above level previously in the first round of testing, the very first round of testing, was the water fountain outside of those.
So, are the, the associated sinks are the two that have the...
They're in that same area, yes.
Thank you. Does anyone else have questions at this point? Okay, Counselor Obray, and then Counselor Franco, and then Atwater.
Okay. Is Ledge Light okay with the provisions being made at the concession stand?
I, well, I haven't talked to Ledge Light about that.
We just provided the bottled water.
We provided the bottled water for them to use. I believe that the Booster Club or whoever's in charge of the concession stand actually has to get approval from, they, they're inspected by Ledge Light.
Right, I understand that. But that's usually, you know, it doesn't happen every time you open it up, so I just...
Right.
Trying to make sure that they...
I can call Ledge Light. I'll call Ledge Light tomorrow and just confirm that. I don't think that they would have a problem with supplying the bottled water, and the sinks are labeled not for drinking, so. But I'll inform them of that and just verify it.
My other question was, we had somebody that came to speak to the council just recently and said that her son was being charged for water. Do you know of any instances where we're charging for the water?
I believe that the Food Services Department sells water and has it available to students. However, I don't think anybody is required to buy bottled water.
Are we providing it? Where are we, the places that we don't have bubbles working, are we providing water at those?
All, all the, all the fountains that we tested in the high school are below the limits, so those are all on in the high school. The, the problem is at the fieldhouse.
Right.
And I spoke with the athletic director and the football coach, and their, Porsche Borderline also indicated to me, or pointed out to me, that there is also an outside spigot down on the practice football field that kids use often, so we tested that as well, and that one was below the limit, so the football coach thought that he would be okay with getting his water from that source. So, that's what they've been using.
Okay. Well, maybe some clarification needs to go up to the parents, you know, because rather than your kid telling you he's paying for water when they're not paying for it.
We've been selling water at high school for, for years. You know, it's a, it's a product that people can get from a vending machine.
Mr. Burt wanted to add something.
Forgive my voice, I have a cold. But my understanding, having talked with her, is there's water provided for the areas where the water's been deemed unacceptable. There's, her concern was that some children may not feel comfortable drinking water, even in some other areas. And in those areas, there's not bottled water available. They have to buy it if they want to have water. That was her concern, just that she wanted to have water in all areas, even if there wasn't a concern with the source of water. That's what that was.
Okay. And there's plenty of water down when they're practicing sports and so forth?
Well, it's inconvenient because it's at the other end of the field, but they've been doing it, so. But it is inconvenient.
Okay.
And just to be clear, all the water in the whole new part of the building has never shown any indication of a problem. So, all of those areas of the building, the three floors of the, of the new part of the high school, that's all been cleared. Or, it has consistently always tested below the limit.
So, the concession stand in this, or the fieldhouse in this last round of testing tested below the limits, but I don't, I haven't turned it back on in the fieldhouse for the athletes until I've gone back to Cindy Sek at the State Department and discussed it with her with regard to the fact that we had a bad, let's call it a bad reading the first time, and now we have a good reading. I have some ideas about why that might have happened, but I'd like to discuss it with her before I actually turn the water on or do not turn the water on and figure something else out. I want to confer with her and get her opinion on how we should handle it from this point.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Franco, Atwater, and then Sefiri.
So, at Claude Chester, there were some sinks that had an issue in some of the classrooms when you had tested, I believe, in 2016? Are those still, do they have issues?
I think the nurse's office was the only one that had actually tested below the limit, but there were some other, there were classrooms adjacent to that, and I think I, in my, did you see the map that I had colored? Those were colored yellow, I believe, and those were turned off just to be sure that, because we hadn't tested them, we wanted to be sure that they didn't use it, and we provide bottled water in that area.
So, since we discussed this in the summer, they've been turned off? Not, you didn't just put signs up?
I didn't hear the whole question.
Since we discussed this in the summer, the ones at Claude Chester, the sinks in the classrooms, you've shut them off, or did you put signs up? Because last I knew you were going to put signs up.
We tested, we tested that area, and those tests came back fine, this last round. Even the nurse's room, after some of the plumbing repairs were done, came back okay, but we left the bottled water in the nurse's office, just as a courtesy.
Did you, what did you just say that you turned off, then?
The fountain at the other end of the building.
Okay, so, let's go to Claude Chester.
Hold on. Are you talking about the classrooms last year that we talked about?
Yes, in 2016, you had tested.
Those classrooms, we turned off, just to be, just as a precaution.
All right, so you turned them off, and then this past summer, did you retest them?
Yes.
And they came back fine?
Yes. They hadn't been tested in the first round. We turned them off as a precaution. And I think, if you saw the map that I had done, those were colored yellow, indicating that we had turned them off as a precaution.
Right, and when we talked in the summer, they were, they were not turned off, though. So, you turned them off since then, because Dr. Grenier had said you were going to put signs up, letting the kids know not to use them for drinking? There were sinks in the classrooms at the front of the building.
Tell us about the classrooms you're referring to.
They were near the nurse's office, in the front part of the building, and those sinks...
Those were from the testing from 2016.
Yes.
Yes. The nurse's office tested above the limit. We did not test those classrooms near the nurse's office at the time we were testing that first round of testing.
In 2016, we did.
2016, that's correct. We tested the nurse's office, and we tested the water fountains in the building.
And you turned them off at that point?
We turned off, yeah, they were...
They were suspicious, because they were close to the...
They were close, they were adjacent to the nurse's office.
And they're fine, and so you turned them back on. So, they're all back on?
They're all back on.
They are, yes.
And they're all safe?
Because they're all safe.
They've all been picked, yes.
Okay, so the only, there's only one issue at Claude Chester, and that's one fountain in the back of the building?
That's correct.
Okay.
And we retested again, as directed by the Department of Public Health, and the results still came back not in our favor.
Okay. And that shut off?
Yeah, it's plugged up, yes. It's plugged up.
Okay, so let's talk about the fountain at Fitch, the one in the hallway that was turned off, you said in 2016?
Yes.
And you just said it just tested okay now, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
No, but did they, what has been done since the summer when it...
Since 2016, the plumbers changed some of the fittings and piping into, it goes into a mechanical room behind that section, and they changed some of the piping and fittings in there.
Okay. All right, thanks. Counselor Atwater, and then Sefiri.
My understanding is that this has been going on since April of 2016?
That's correct.
It's been two and a half years, numerous tests and so forth, and we don't still seem to be any nearer to a solution. My recommendation would be that although it was against the recommendation of the council, the RTM gave you $50,000 to do a study. Has any of that money been used to find out what the problem is?
We've been using board money to do this testing up to this point.
Then what was the point of the $50,000?
The water dispenser thing. Let me answer your question. What we originally had planned was, we were going to do this testing and then try to get an engineering firm in to, while we were continuing the testing, and the testing has come back positive in most cases. One of the things that we, we think may be an ultimate solution is there is a filtering system that can be, sort of like in some people's homes. And so, we are essentially trying one out, and Sam tested the water in the, it's not a bubbler, it's a system where you'd be able to fill up a water bottle.
It's a bottle filling station.
Which is really what the kids do by and large. And so, Sam is, we haven't gotten those test results back, but just last week, tested to be sure that the filter is actually identifying the lead and clearing the lead out. And then, that may be the ultimate solution, if we can install a series of... And then that may be the ultimate solution, if we can install a series of those water dispensing stations with filters which we would then maintain, like you do a home system. We are looking at, well, we're really, frankly, we're relying upon the State Health Department and the water officials at the State Health Department and Ledjlight, and kind of going in that direction before we make a decision about some sort of engineering. We don't, we're still studying.
I just think something should be done, it's gone on too long. Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Zepari.
Concerned about the failure to hire an engineering firm to come in and find this. When you came to us back in March, I think it was, and asked us for $50,000, I think Council Moravsek was sitting on the opposite side, and I felt that you should be able to find it on your own, just with the type of work that you've been doing. For instance, in the Claude Chester school, you've isolated that now down to the region of one fountain, as I understand it. It would seem a simple solution to pull that fountain out, or if you think it's the, a filter behind it, to fix it. But in any case, at the time that you presented your request for $50,000, you did not tell us that you planned to do some other things so that you might not need the $50,000. And we in fact said, well, you really don't need the $50,000. And you said, well, we really do, and went to the RTM and got the $50,000 put back in the budget for this purpose. But you haven't used it for that purpose, and there's no indication that you intend to use it for that purpose at this time. I think when you come to us and tell us that you need money, we have to rely on you to tell us what you really need. We didn't agree with you then, but you went to the RTM and you convinced them that you really needed it, and they gave it to you, but you haven't done it. I think that's a serious problem with communication between department heads and the council. The council represents the people who elected them, and we're supposed to be sure that the money that we spend on their behalf is indeed spent for the things that we appropriated for. And I'm very disappointed to learn, at this stage of the game, six months after the money's been appropriated for you, you've done nothing with it. It's not to be put aside, when you get an appropriation, it's not the intention of this council, that that's money that you can be put aside to use for other purposes. It's to be used for the purpose that you asked for, and the council or the RTM approved of. And so I see a problem here in communication between us.
Anyone who hasn't spoken yet, wish to speak. Mr. Burt.
I just want to note that that $50,000, I believe, is on the CIP, so it can't be spent on anything without council approval, so it's protected.
But that $50,000 that was appropriated did go into the budget, and it was, is reflected in the mill rate that the taxpayers apply.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with that, I just want it to be known that they can't, they can't spend it without your approval for something else.
But this kind of, this kind of activity is what has caused our tax rate to spiral up, and it's, it brought some of our taxpayers to this board, to this council, at one of our first meetings to say, hey, we're paying more and more in taxes, we'd like you to get control of that. And now we're finding, one of the reasons is, we're being asked to appropriate money by department heads who don't use it for what we appropriated it for, and the people are paying higher taxes because of that.
I don't disagree, I just think it's important for the people at home watching to know that they can't spend it on something else without permission.
Right, and Dr. Grenier?
Well, I just want to check my calendar, because we didn't get the money until July 1st. And today is the 25th of September, so I don't think that's six months. And we thought it would be prudent to follow the advice of the health officials before we go off into some expensive plan to do that. And if the health officials tell us that money is not to be allocated for that purpose, then we won't use it for that purpose. We're certainly not going to waste taxpayer money on an engineering study if the testing results indicate that there may be a better and cheaper solution, we're gonna, I'm gonna recommend that we would pursue that.
My only point is that I recommend that you pursue the simpler methods before you come to us and get appropriations for funds. And when you come to us and get appropriation for funds that are necessary, then you should be sure they are necessary. And you were so certain that it was necessary, that when we declined to give you that money, you went to the RTM and say, hey, these poor kids are going to be exposed to lead if we don't get this money. Now you've had the money, and you're not using it for what it was appropriated for.
Counselors of Perry, you said they're telling you that they're waiting to hear from the health department to see what the recommendation of the health department is.
I know that.
I believe that's prudent for them to do. The filters you spoke of, is that something that you believe would be a cost-effective way of handling the problem?
Potentially.
Potentially.
So then we would come back and say, we think the better solution is not to do an engineering, but, you know, it's premature. We're not even sure of the filter, that's why Sam tested it, we're not even sure the filter is going to be effective against lead.
Now, is that something that, is it a product that the health department is recommending to you?
Well, we're in consultation with them, yes.
Okay.
I think, you know, this is a complex matter. We certainly want to address it because we're taking it seriously, and we want to do it in the most cost-effective way.
I think our main concern is that the kids in the schools have safe water?
Right.
And that the parents feel comfortable knowing that all the sources of hazardous water are closed off and the kids can't access them. I think that's our first priority. Second priority then is to get it fixed. And you're working on that aspect, so please keep us updated as far as that goes. Does anybody else have questions on this particular issue?
Can I just, one quick thing?
Yes.
So let me just clarify, so I know what I'm talking about here. Fieldhouse and concession stand at Fitch are an issue. And inside the building, are there any more issues?
The only issue identified were the two lavatories in the 2800 wing.
Is that the vintage wing?
Yes.
And that was outside?
Some people call it the business wing, but there's business and tech ed in that wing.
And that's the one that you had?
Previously, yeah, there was an issue.
The fountains fixed now, but the bathrooms now?
Yes.
Okay. And have you brought, let me just ask, have you brought somebody in to change the plumbing fixtures on that as well?
No, I was waiting to go back to the state to present all these findings with her and discuss it with her.
Okay, thank you. And do we have a date for when that will happen? Ballpark?
We asked for expedited results on the test, but we haven't, it's been a couple of weeks already, and I haven't gotten it back. But as soon as I get them, we'll be moving forward.
Month, two months? What do you think?
Well, the testing results from June, we didn't get back until August, the middle of August. So, but these are less, there are fewer tests that we sent out, and we did ask for expedited results, so I'm certainly hopeful that we'll get them back soon.
Thank you. Counselor Parker, did you want to say something? Oh, I thought you did, I'm sorry.
Counselor Ober.
I was just wondering, who's just doing the testing?
Groton Utilities.
Gee. You better get on now. Thank you.
Well, they're not doing the test, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Let me clarify.
Okay.
They're taking the draw.
Groton Utilities has certified people to take the draw and take those samples, and then they have to send them off to a state-certified lab. So it has to go to a special lab. They don't do that testing here in Groton.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, is there anything else on this particular issue? Dr. Grenier, is there other things you wanted to discuss?
Just a second update. Two new middle schools were opened this year. One of them is now called Color Arts and Magnet, Arts and Humanities Magnet School, and it is off to a roaring start. And Westside STEM Magnet School. So what we're able to do through a lottery process is to allow just about, there were a few students who didn't make it through the lottery process, literally a handful, but the students on, wherever they lived in Groton, were allowed to either go to their neighborhood school or go to the magnet school. And we are off to a really terrific start there. In addition to that, of course, that's getting ready for the new consolidated middle school. In addition to that, we have begun the International Backglory Middle Years Program at grades six, seven, eight, and nine. Next year it will be nine and 10. So that's, that's a huge effort that we're paying for through a federal education grant. And then the last thing is, you may have seen a little bit more far-ranging bus transportation because we are, we are shooting kids all over town. It's really, it's a testament to the work, actually Sam supervises that department too. It's a testament to the, to the work of those folks and the STA. We are, we are literally transporting 5,000 students all over this community, and it's worked really great so far. So we're off to a really positive start. We're gearing up these magnet schools, we did a televised presentation, and we're hoping to do a kind of like a town hall meeting and make a little more public presentation of this in the near future.
Counselor Ober.
Kind of out of the loop on some of these things, so could you tell me what, say in a fifth grade, is going to be changed for this new program or added?
Yep, sure. Well, it's sixth, seventh, and eighth, but the new thing is that there are artists and residents, well, let's take Cutler for example, artists and residents are coming to the school, and they're using arts to teach all the various subjects. So for example, there was a sculptor, sculptor who came in and worked with the biology classes and had the kids make a human skeleton. Certain groups of kids made the arm and others the leg. And the great thing about the artist was it all had to fit together, which sort of makes sense.
Yeah.
But it was great. But they now have, they have a television studio, thanks to the grant. It was a $5 million grant, we were very fortunate. We have television studios, so now there's a broadcasting class, there is a dance class, there is a theater class. So there's a lot, there's a few discrete classes. And then if I go to Westside, where the STEM program is, all students are going to have an engineering program called Project Lead the Way, which is really a terrific program, but that is the sixth grade STEM program. And then seventh and eighth graders at Westside, not at Cutler, are going to continue to have advanced engineering classes, encoding classes. So there's a lot of work being done with some really terrific, Sonnolus is a partner to help us with the television studio, Mystic Seaport, the kids have gone to Mystic Seaport, and they're doing hands-on learning there. So Nautilus Museum, Coast Guard Academy, who has some really good STEM partners there, EB. So both, both of these schools are now functioning as magnet schools, and those schools for the current sixth graders, please God, they'll have a new school. And they'll go into a consolidated school, but both pathways will still exist, there'll still be the Arts and Humanities, and there'll still be STEM, and they'll all be International Backglory.
May I ask one more question? When you were doing the students that wanted to exchange where they went, was there kind of a number or?
Yes. Well, to tell you the truth, we got lucky. The number of children, demographically, just pure dumb luck, the number of sixth graders who were entering Cutler was much lower by like 30, 35 students than Westside. So we had, we were able to accommodate more students at Cutler. So about 46 students came from the west side of town to Cutler, and about 16, 18 students went from the midwest side of town to, most of the movement, by the way, were by sixth graders. In other words, the kids that had already been in the school wanted to stay in their school.
Yeah.
But the fifth graders, from the sixth elementary schools, it was a real choice, and it was very much, there was a lot of interest. We had a number of open houses, and we had, we had lots of kids apply. But we also have, I should say, at both of our elementary magnet schools, Katherine Klonowski School has fully 36% of its students not neighborhood students, as to say, they go through a lottery process. Where we only take about a quarter of the kids, by the way. There's huge interest in going to Katherine Klonowski. And then this is the third year of Northeast Academy running as a magnet school. So again, that's why the buses are, you perhaps see them all over the place, because we are transporting children all over town, literally.
Yes.
I had heard that some students are actually coming back to school here that had previously gone outside of the town, is that true?
Yeah, for sure. And the reason I know that is because we looked at the enrollment last night, middle school enrollment is considerably higher. What I'd like to do, and have not yet done, is do a study to, I know we did an open house, for example, at the Regional Multicultural Magnet School, and seven of the eight Groton students came back. So I think, you know, that's a, we certainly have a vibrant, in southeastern Connecticut, there's great opportunities. But I think starting these two middle schools really made Groton competitive in the area, and it's been, it's been really a blessing. And so we are thoroughly excited and working with the architects to build this new building. Now we're trying to figure out how to name it, which is probably going to be the hardest thing in the world.
So I had, I'm sorry, Counselor Parker.
Just a question afterwards, so when they come up to Fitch, is there engineering program for the kids?
Yes, yes.
That turns into maybe getting apprenticeship?
Yes.
And the same thing with the humanitarian part of Cutler?
Yes, very much so, yeah.
Should be clarified too, when you guys start announcing that, so people know that that Fitch is going to become more open besides IB.
Yep.
Quick question, you said IB is going to be from sixth to ninth grade?
Sixth through 10th next year, yes.
Next year. 11th grade doesn't get it?
11th and 12th graders have the International Backglory program through the diploma program.
Through the diploma. Just, I was just wanting to clarify for the television.
Yes.
Counselor Parker.
Good to see you both. Do you anticipate that surge in enrollment, do you anticipate that surge in enrollment having perhaps any, making an impact on the next school, the consolidated school in the plans?
We are watching that very carefully. We, as you know, we closed down one elementary school, and we are poised to close the two older SB Butler and Claude Chester, to build these two. And before we make any, before the board makes any other moves, which could be possible, we are very cognizant of what's going on at EB, and we certainly don't want to turn over a building and then turn around. One of the good things, I've been talking to middle school folks, one of the good things about having the middle school adjacent to the high schools, there could be some shared space, there could be some middle school opportunities for children at the high school. Well, we hope there will be, actually. But in terms of the, right now, the population of the middle school is as high as it's ever been in the last 10 years. So it's a, it's very much a factor in our thinking.
I had a concern with the elementary schools that are the magnet schools, if you will, the humanities school, and then those kids, you would assume they would then want to go on to Cutler, which is the humanities school.
Yes.
And the issue being that perhaps not all those kids could fit in. So is there a way, I know there were some questions this year about that, are you rethinking the process for moving those kids in future years?
We have fixed it, yeah.
You have fixed it?
Yeah, we, I say with humility, we've learned a lot of lessons about how to run a lottery. And home preference is, and so you're exactly right. A student who goes to Katherine Klonowski, who's looking for a STEM program, really ought to be, regardless of where they live, ought to be given a home preference to get into the STEM.
Right.
And we're, we have already, we have sort of a long list of lessons learned. We kind of went into this somewhat, thinking it was relatively simple matter, and it is far from simple.
It's all right, as long as there's lessons learned. Counselor Ober.
Counsel O'Bray?
I'm sure this is something that you're doing. You mentioned before that you were working with EB on one of your projects. Are you also working with them on predictions for how much our student population will grow as their employment grows?
Yes. We are, that's what I meant when Andre asked the question. We are very cognizant of that and we're, we're working closely with them and we have an eye on houses going up on Route 12 and right next to Charles Warren School. And so we, we're very careful about that and we are making plans to, to be sure we have the capacity to deal with the number of children.
Great. Going to be a lot of kids, I think, coming into town.
Yes. That's what we hope.
Anything else for Dr. Gurney or did you have anything else you'd like to say, sir?
No, thank you very much.
No? Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you next month.
It's good to see you looking well.
Thanks, John, thanks.
You too. Thank you.
Okay. So I want to make sure I do this in the right order. So we need to discuss this in COW and then executive session?
Executive session in the COW, correct.
Okay.
And then once we come out, we would go into the special council meeting.
All right. So Counsel Heath, would you please, I'm going to go out of order, sorry Counsel Parker. Would you please read that?
I hereby move that the members of the town council, together with Town Manager John Burt, Assistant Town Manager Robert Sagami, and the Town Attorney-
Can you speak up just a little bit?
And the Town Attorney Eileen Dugan to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy and/or negotiations with respect, collective bargaining regarding the United Steelworkers of America. This action is taken without prejudice to the council's right to discuss such matters in a private meeting pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 1-202. I so move.
Second. Moved by Heath, seconded by Parker. All those in favor of going into executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining, I'm sorry?
I think it's Eileen Dugan and not Helen Dugan?
Yes, Eileen Dugan. That's correct. All those in favor of going into executive session for the collective bargaining discussion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. We are in executive session at... Okay, the council is out of executive session at 8:03. Counsel Parker?
Make a motion to, make a motion to recommend a resolution to approve the request for funds necessary to implement the agreement between the Town of Groton and United Steelworkers of America AFL-CIO Local Union 9411 for the period July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2020. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Parker and seconded by Heath. Is there any discussion that can be public at this point? Seeing none, all those in favor of recommending the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. At this point, we are going to adjourn the COW, or recess the COW temporarily. I'm going to recess the COW at 8:04. So I'm going to call to order the special town council meeting for September 25th and it is 8:05. All members are present and we have new business. Counsel Franco, here's your resolution, please.
Resolution to approve an tentative agreement between the Town of Groton and the United Steelworkers of America AFL-CIO Local Union 9411 for the period July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020. Whereas the Town of Groton and the United Steelworkers of America AFL-CIO Local Union 9411 for the term July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020. And whereas the bargaining unit membership voted to approve the agreement and whereas the approval is recommended by the town negotiators, therefore be resolved, the Town, Groton Town Council hereby approves agreement and the expenditure of funds necessary to implement the agreement between the Town of Groton and the United Steelworkers of America AFL-CIO Local Union 9411 for the period July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Baumgartner. Is there any discussion on 2018-305-1?
Would it be appropriate to mention that this is been planned for, that we have some reserved funds?
If you'd like to mention that, you may.
I, I just think it's important that people understand that this is something that had been planned for. We knew we were negotiating and the, the funds have been set aside.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of 2018-305-1, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn by Atwaters, seconded by Zepari. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. The special town council meeting is adjourned at 8:08. Okay. Not right now. I'm sorry, but I just, okay. So what we need now, okay. Reconvening the COW at 8:08.
Make a motion to suspend the rules. I hereby move pursuant to Town Council Rule Section 7B to suspend the council's rules and allow the council to consider an executive session to discuss an attorney-client communication. I so move.
Second. Okay. Motion to suspend the rules by Heath, seconded by Parker. Requires two-thirds vote to suspend the rules. So all those in favor of suspending the rules for this purpose, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Okay. You get these.
I hereby move that the members of the town council, together with Town Manager John Burt and Town Attorney Eileen Dugan to go into executive session pursuant to General Statute Section 1-206E for the purpose of discussing a matter which would result in the disclosure of public records or the information contained therein described, that being an attorney-client communication. I so move.
Moved by Heath, is there a second to go into executive session for the purpose stated? Moved by Heath, seconded by Parker. All those in favor of going into executive session for the stated purpose, say aye.
May I? The last speech ended.
Opposed?
Wait.
Abstaining? So moved unanimously. We are in executive session at 8:10. So we are out of executive session at 8:59 and we're going to take a five-minute recess.
Okay. Five minutes.
Okay. Okay, council committee of the whole is out of recess at 9:06. Counsel O'Bray, item 5C, please.
Motion to recommend a resolution to approve the town manager to sign any needed paperwork as part of the Klonowski School border-
Boulder.
Bor-
Boulder.
Boulder, thank you. Heights, merit property easement trade. I so move.
Second. Moved by O'Bray and seconded by Schmidt. Mr. Burt, did you want to address anything?
Just to mention that we're, we're finalizing the easement language with deep back and forth, so we're ready to, I should have a pretty good...
Great.
And Attorney General's Office, they, they're putting jobs through here. The title work and understanding is they, they asked a couple of follow-up questions and they've been satisfied.
And Mr. Burt provided some maps for us this evening.
Just a reminder, the construction area.
Counsel Franco, did you have a comment?
I have just a quick question. From what I have understood, the parking was supposed to be down here. Has it changed up there?
No. There's two pieces to the parking, there's two pieces to the parking. Deep required us to do something on the north side, but then some of the construction groups said we'd be nice, because most people want, a lot of people want, for the south side. And so we worked with Electric Boat, or we are forking Electric Boat, to do something down there and they're still working on that, indicating we'll go with the parking there.
Okay.
But Deep, Deep had required that.
All right, great, thank you.
Would the parking down there be impervious or pervious?
I think it'll be pervious, they'll be ground.
All right.
I believe, I guess, I haven't seen the plan yet.
Counsel O'Bray?
I was just wondering, would it be possible, when you're working on the parking with EB, to do it in a way that in the future, we may be able to create a park in that area for maybe soccer, baseball, or whatever?
EB's down here.
Yeah, I'm sure.
To do park wear?
Well-
They've already pretty much told me where they're going to, you know where that little pad of, that little cement pad is on their little property there? Are you familiar with the property?
Yeah, yeah.
Basically, that going up to the, you know, a little bit to the left to get basically kind of this area here is what they're looking at.
So it's not the flat part where the water's up behind it?
It'd be more to the right of the water. The water's more on the left. There's a path actually to the right, to the, over, further to the right of that water.
I think you could see.
There's a path that goes right into the property.
Yeah. Okay. I just hope in the future that we might be able to work something out for, do something there for the neighborhood. Be great to have something there that the kids said would very-
Well, that was part, EB's doing part, they're doing a parking lot there for themselves.
The whole thing?
Yeah, for the rest of it.
Okay. So much for that.
You know, very grateful that they were willing to work with us on our parking.
Correct. That's wonderful that they're allowing us that. Any further, Counsel Baumgartner?
A question about the public access of the Boulder Heights location.
Right.
Currently, what's the best route for folks who are looking to maybe walk around that site?
We're still going to need to look at the best way to get people in there. Well, you know, through the ledges, there is an access way through there. But I didn't know until recently. I wish I had a map with me. I don't have a map with me, but you're all familiar with that, where the boulders are actually are, where you go into that cul-de-sac. Well, there's actually an easement going north of there and you can actually enter just north of that, basically off the next subdivision entrance. So you can park in that main cul-de-sac, walk just a little ways north and go in. I haven't walked it myself, so I can't tell you how accessible it is. But we've always talked about, we may have to move, you know, do a little bit of work out there. We have our open space, I forgot, it's not open space fund, but our land acquisition fund, there's 90,000 and we may want to do a little something just to, we'll do what we need to do to make sure there's good access into there, so.
Isn't there access off Dry St. Drive also?
Through the ledges. You can park in the ledges and come in through that way.
You can, actually, you can see the access point from the entrance where the ledges are.
Oh, I haven't been through there.
You can see it and you can walk right in. It's totally flat, no problem.
Okay. But there's no real parking there.
Well, it sounds like we have a field trip.
We've, we've done this. We actually ran into the manager. He's hiking with his son over there the day we were out.
We all climbed over the boulders.
Right. Well, not all of us, but I went up to the north side.
Yeah, Connor and I climbed the boulders that day.
Right. All right. Is there any further discussion on 2018-306? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2018-306, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Counsel Atwater, 5D, please. This is on page 14. No, just, he just introduced it. There's no formal action required, we just want to introduce the item.
The purpose of this referral is to obtain approval to hire a library director.
Thank you. Mr. Burt, did you want to address this at all?
Sure. We all know that Vidiyan, who will sorely be missed, is, is retiring in early November. We have only posted internally so far and we're going to, we've got two candidates internally to interview. If, if one of those works out, then we might find something down the road to make some other staff changes, but at this point, we definitely need a director in place. And as you know, Vidiyan did a fantastic job getting grants and birthed a library and wherever we get, we want them to continue on in that tradition.
I think she got tired of fighting with us at budget time. She's a great asset, she'll be missed.
Counsel Zepari?
The background of this indicates there's a salary range of 90,040 to 113,902. Is that the salary range that the present director is in?
Yes. I forget where, she's somewhere, she's, I don't know if you remember Bob, she's in the high 90s maybe, 98-ish?
98, 40.
Yeah, 98.
And how long has she been with us?
Long time, well. Did she come from somewhere else? How long has she been here?
I think she's, I mean, I was 30 years old.
Why isn't she at the top of this ladder?
Well, first of all, because we don't have steps or merit increases, but this, that scale was just adopted last year, after a pay study.
Okay.
So there hasn't been time then to, you know, with the new, the pay range just went up last year.
Okay.
So this doesn't require a vote, it's just a concurrence of the council for Mr. Burt to fill the position. So is there any disagreement in filling positions? Okay, very good. 5E, Counsel Schmidt, this is on page 15.
Yes, this is the Groton Ambulance Lease Agreement and I recommend a resolution to approve the Groton Ambulance Lease Agreement and giving Town Manager John Burt approval to execute such agreement. I so move.
Second. Moved by Schmidt and seconded by Parker. Any discussion? Are you raising your hand? Counsel O'Bray and then Franco?
Did you negotiate this lease?
Yes.
Took a year.
Pardon me?
Took a full year.
Yeah, I'm sure it didn't. I don't want to discourage you in any way from, from that, but you know, this, this lease, is it, is this complicit because of the negotiations?
Well, a lot of this is from the earlier lease, a lot of the language, we just updated it.
Because-
And then the attorneys have reviewed it.
Yeah. I don't mean this in a derogatory manner at all. I have great respect for attorneys and I certainly have great respect for you, but this is like a lease that if anything happens, you've got to bring an attorney back in. I think it should be simplified, myself. I do leases all the time. They're not quite as complicated as, as I'm sure, but one of the things that the realtors strive for is a contract that's easy for people to understand and make decisions from. And this is really, I think, over the top, but-
This is our early standard format and they did, they've already brought it to their council and moved it. They're okay with the law.
Their council?
Yeah.
Is there a security deposit in here?
No, they're already there and it's just a renewal of the lease.
I, I understand that, but is there a security deposit in there? Is there an option for them to purchase?
No, but that's something they want to talk about at some point with us. They have to get through this next year. I, and I don't know how much you've seen in my reports, but they've got some ongoing issues they have to work through in the next year and then they want to talk about either, you know, they really like to build new. They like to see if there's any way to build new at some point, but failing that, they would like to lease to buy initially. But they ask for a shorter lease, get through their issues and then, you know, we look at it along the way.
Well, I know you've put a lot of time into it, so I, I won't belabor it, but I, I hope in the future, as we do things, we can make things a lot more transparent because nobody's going to really read this until there's a problem.
I did read it.
I did too. But when the problem comes, an attorney's going to have to come in to answer it.
And they did have their attorney reviewing it too. There was actually quite a bit of back and forth between their attorney and our attorney.
I'm sure, I'm sure. That's exactly the point that I'm making. You know, the average person could not determine a question, I don't think, if, if a problem comes up without advice of attorneys.
For the most part, though, I've actually had a lot of lease experience over the last 20 years. I, I have no problem going through it.
Counsel Franco and then Zepari?
I'm happy that we're charging annual, it's basically an annual fee now, right? And although I think it's, it's low-
It's going to have to be ratcheted up over time. And I told them that. Good, you know, they need, like I said, in next year and a half or so to get through their issues.
Right. I think it's the beginning stage of-
That was the intent.
You know, slowly getting them to pay their time here. Thank you.
Counsel Zepari?
I noticed that the rent is very low and it's not sufficient to cover our liability for things like replacing the roof. We're looking at, even after three years, I think, $300 a month to rent that property. Is that right?
Well, they're in the non-term budget, so this year there would be zero, the next the next year is a lot, $2,000, I think, and then $3,000.
For the year.
And they just, they don't have the money at this point. Otherwise, we just basically have no lease for the next two years.
So as an alternative, I would recommend, and I move, and I hope other people will agree with me, I move that we give the property to the Groton Ambulance Company contingent upon it being used as a space to garage their ambulances and as a space for their offices. But you can make a gift with, and it's given so long as, and put in your condition, and that means automatically, if that condition is not met at any time in the future, ownership reverts to the person who made, the party that made the gift. And so I would think that that gets the liability out of our hands, and it lets them have the property with no rent, but they simply have to take full responsibility for maintaining it, and we don't have any liability for it.
Okay, I'm going to interrupt for one second and let the manager speak before we do anything else.
The property was already a gift to us, there's already restrictions on it, so we'd have to research that. That came with the Jabez, the Jabez Smith House was on one, and this property was all one bigger property that came to us as a gift, there's restrictions on it, so we'd have to look at, you wouldn't want to make the motion tonight, you'd want to research it.
You're probably going to have to tell me that again, because it sounds a little familiar now, but, all right.
So you made a motion, but no one seconded, and the manager's requesting that you give him some time and to explain the situation with the restrictions on the property.
And they want to get the building, so I'm all for it.
Right.
And if you notice in the maintenance...
Can you, can you look into that before we vote on this?
Well, I think we're going to want some negotiations, or I'm not, I'd rather get this lease in place and have time, but they're not ready to take over our full maintenance at this point anyways, even though you see in there, basically, the onus is on them to do maintenance, and then we can choose to help out, which we did this year.
Yeah.
But they do not have much of any fund balance at this point. They want, they want a year and a half, before they would entertain taking the property, they'd like at least a year and a half to get their finances in order.
So if we vote on this tonight, make the lease in place, and then perhaps we can have a referral to look into the situation that Counselors Zepary is recommending?
I'm all for getting anything off our hands.
Okay.
I would just like to make a comment, that I'm not willing to just hand over the land that the town owns to somebody like that.
You're doing it all the time.
When he said he's, they're willing to purchase it in the future.
Well, let's, let's let the manager, because there are restrictions on what we can do with that property, so let's let the manager come back with a report for another date.
I can send you a copy of that tomorrow, so you have it. I'll send that out to everybody.
There we go.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, so we are looking, staff recommended alternative two, which is to approve the lease agreement. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed one, abstaining? One opposed is Overy, and one abstention is Zepary, so that passes seven to one to one. Thank you. 5F, revised, revised ethics ordinance. Counselor Atwater? I think it's you, right? No?
Counselor Zepary.
Oh, Counselor Zepary, I'm sorry, I lost track. How appropriate, page 24.
I have some issues with this, but I'll read the resolution.
Please, thank you.
I move that the council approve the revised code of ethics ordinance as attached to this agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Zepary, seconded by Heed. Discussion. Counselor Atwater, then Zepary.
Reading what's on my page, it says to recommend a resolution not to approve. Isn't the resol...
Recommend a resolution to approve the revised code of ethics ordinance.
But I think what Counselor Zepary said was to approve, not a resolution to approve.
I can't rewind it. Did you say, I'm not sure what he said.
I move that the council approve...
Oh, no, we, to recommend, we need to recommend a resolution, that way it'll go to the council, so. So would you withdraw your original motion?
I will.
So the motion and the second have been withdrawn, so if you could read it as it is written on page 24, please.
Here.
Thank you, Counselor Atwater.
I move the council adopt a resolution, recommend a resolution to approve the revised code of ethics ordinance.
Thank you. Moved by Zepary, seconded by Heed. Counselor Zepary had his hand up, and then Counselor Franco.
Am I being allowed to speak now?
I guess.
Okay.
Yes, please.
If we turn to item F on... I spoke with Town Manager about this before the council began, and I was told that there is an absent period, period, in the first paragraph.
Is this page 31?
Yes.
Okay, page 31, under F.
Hearings. And it reads now, following a determination of probable cause, all hearings shall be open to the public and recorded in a manner to be determined by the Town Attorney, period. Hearings shall not be subject to the rules of court, the rules of evidence, and all applicable rights under the United States and Connecticut constitutions. There should be a period after, the hearing shall not be subject to the rules of court, period.
I had that simple, too.
Then the next sentence should be, the rules of evidence and all applicable rights under the United States and Connecticut constitutions, including without limitation the rights of an accused to confront and cross-examine his/her accuser, of every witness or party to be represented by an attorney at law of his or her choice, and of every witness to decline to answer questions in accordance with the Fifth Amendment of the Constitution of the United States.
Apply.
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 That means that, you know, without the period, it says all of these things are excluded. With the period, it says you're just not going to have the rules of court, but you do assure that the rules that are guaranteed in the constitution remain in effect. So that's, that's what I think must be changed in this, in this document.
Mr. Burt?
Yes.
So how will it read, then? What punctuation? Okay.
Right, exactly.
Okay, great.
There's going to be a period in there, and then the rest of the text will remain the same.
Yes. Is there anything else, or we'll go on to Counselor Franco?
Well, the only other thing I think is that we should have some consideration for, this only includes, you know, this is directed at financial conflict, but there are other issues of ethical consideration that come, that, for the council to consider, and may be good to put into our code of ethics, such as employees, department heads, making presentations to the, to the council and requesting funds must be speaking truthfully and candidly. And we're seeing, we've had a couple of instances where department heads have requested funds, and the funds have been appropriated for them, and then not used for the purpose that they were appropriated. I think there's an ethical breach there, and it should be in the code of ethics.
I think we need to be careful with what we're saying, that we're not making accusations.
Not an accusation.
Counselor Franco. Did you, you had...
I have the same correction that Counselors Zepary had made earlier, with a period.
With a period.
To make a correction in that paragraph.
There's another, there's on page 30. There's an open parentheses, in, under evaluation and acknowledgement, in letter two, evaluation and acknowledgement on page 30, two A.
Oh, it doesn't.
The parentheses is open whether or not filed, and it doesn't close anywhere. So I'm not sure where it goes.
Whether or not filed.
Whether or not filed, parentheses?
Yes.
Close parentheses, okay. All right, anybody else have anything that they would want to discuss regarding the ethics, code of ethics? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of recommending a resolution to approve the revised code of ethics ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining?
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one abstention. Zepary abstaining. So that passes eight, zero, one. So I don't believe we have to review any other agenda items, other business. Counselor Heed, you had something you wanted to bring to us?
Yes, in order to get in on the council agenda next week. On August 21, the Personnel Committee met, and Counselors Zepary and myself were present. We motioned to recommend reappointing Jeffrey Levins to the Jeffrey Smith, Jeffrey, sorry, Jabez Smith House Committee, and we also motioned to recommend Don Levinson to move from an alternate position to a full member of the Historic District Commission. And then at the September 18 Personnel Meeting, Counselors Schmidt, Zepary, and myself also met, and we motioned to recommend moving Natalie Billing from an alternate position to a regular member on the Community Development Advisory Committee. We motioned to reappoint Richard Dixon and Lorraine Santangelo to Jabez Smith House Committee, June Everett to Parks and Recreation Commission, Christina Post, Douglas Manfred to Permanent School Building Committee, Catherine Brighty and Rosemary Duval-Arnold to Library Board, John Rusbecky to Water Pollution Control Authority, Dennis O'Brien to Retirement Board, David Scott to Inland Wetlands. And in addition, we motioned to appoint Richard Silver to the Housing Authority. He's to fill a vacancy that's one year remaining, out of a five-year term.
Okay.
As a tenant, correct. And then we motioned to appoint Heather, recommend appointing Heather Giancopolis to the History, Historic District Commission. So a motion that we, so, is accept all these motions.
Okay. So moved by Heed, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Zepary. Any questions for Counselor Heed? It looks like the Personnel Committee has done a lot of work, thank you very much, to the members of the Personnel Committee. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of moving this list of people forward to the council, or does it go to the council now, Mr. Burt?
Yes.
Okay. So to move this to the Town Council meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. Any other, other business?
Yes.
Counselor Overy.
Well, I'd just like to ask if maybe, well, I won't be here. Maybe I'm meeting in two weeks. I'd like to see if we're able to do some of the exterior repairs at Park Four before the weather changes. Not, not any construction, because I don't think that's going to happen, but there are, like, when you come out the door, the wood is so bad that it freezes in the winter, because it absorbs water, and it needs to be painted or something done to it. There's a building there with peeling paint coming off it. I'd like to at least see those things done before the weather changes. And then maybe we could have an update from somebody as to what the plans are. I know I bug you about this, John, and I apologize, but it's bugging me.
So just to clarify the plans for the exterior of the Park Four building?
Well, right now, there's only plans for the entrance, for the deck, I guess you call it out there. There's nothing budgeted yet for painting, but the, because of all the permits and engineering, that we won't be able to do the deck until the spring, but, but maybe we could do something just on, if there's a slippery spot, extra.
It's very hazardous. The metal's so old that that freezes. Getting out of there on a stormy night, you've got to be drunk.
Let me talk to Public Works, and I'll see what we can do.
You don't have to be, you don't have to be. All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Frank. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. We are adjourned at 9:32.